I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Bess.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller is absent, and Mayor Croft.
Here.
And our town attorney, Andrew McGuire, is on the screen.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello.
Okay, he's in big room. Introduction, presentations, and proclamation. Presentation by Amber Stewart, Recruiting Assistant with the U.S. Census Bureau regarding local jobs for upcoming 2020 census. Amber, please come up. How are you this evening?
Good, thank you. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I really appreciate that. So, why I'm here is really to promote jobs and awareness of our census that's coming up for 2020. Just give me one moment to get my presentation. So, why do we do our decennial census and why work for the census? Really, census 101. It's what we need to know. The 2020 census is closer than you think. Here's a quick refresher of what it is and why it's essential for everyone to be counted. Everyone does count. The census counts every person living in the U.S. once and only once and in the right place. It's about fair representation. Every ten years, the results of the census are used to reapportion in the House of Representatives, determining how many seats each state gets. It's in the Constitution. The U.S. Constitution requires a census every ten years. The census covers the entire country and everyone living here. The first census was in 1790. It's about redistricting. After each census, state officials use the results to redraw the boundaries of their congressional and state legislative districts adapting to population shifts. It's about $675 billion. Census data will determine how more than $675 billion are spent supporting your state, county, and community's vital programs. Taking part is your civic duty. Completing the census is required. It's a way to participate in our democracy and say, "I count." Census data is used all around you. Residents use census to support community initiatives involving legislation, quality of life, and consumer advocacy. Businesses use census data to decide where to build factories, offices, and stores, which create jobs. Local governments use the census for public safety and emergency preparedness. Real estate developers use the census to build new homes and revitalize old neighborhoods. Your census data is confidential. Federal law protects your census responses. Your answers can only be used to produce statistics. By law, we cannot share your information with immigration enforcement agencies, law enforcement agencies, or allow it to be used to determine your eligibility for government benefits. 2020 will be easier than ever. As in 2020, you will be able to respond to the census online. And you can help. You are the expert. We need your ideas on the best way to make sure everyone in your community gets counted. So, that's why we do the decennial census. We also have the importance of how Arizona received approximately $10.5 billion in federal dollars in FY 2015. That was 35% of the state budget. And approximately $887 per person was lost for each individual that was undercounted in Arizona. That was according to Counting for Dollars study by George Washington University in 2015. So, why work for the decennial census? We have flexibility of jobs. We have full-time and part-time positions. You can assist communities to get a complete count of your residents. It directly affects yearly funding for schools, roads, hospitals, and highways. Work in your community among your friends and neighbors. It's an excellent source of extra income. Right now, we have types of positions, some of which are working from home, being a partner specialist, partnership specialist, recruiting assistants, and enumerators or listers. These are all temporary positions. Right now, our positions are starting at $13 and going up in the state of Arizona. All of our positions can be found at 2020census.gov/jobs. You would please visit that website for anyone who would be interested in applying. We do really appreciate your time. Thank you for promoting the census for 2020, as well as our available jobs that we have for the local community. I will go ahead and put some information on the back counter for anyone who might be interested. And if you have any other questions, please visit our website. Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone? Amber, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Next items, Call to the Public. Call to the Public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for Call to the Public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later time, or responding to criticism. Do we have anyone that would like to speak at Call to the Public? Please come up and tell us your name at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Romanes. I'm the owner of CR Waterworks. And what I do is I deliver potable water to the residents here in Chino Valley. So, what I'm asking you guys is if there is a way that we could go ahead and, as water haulers, get off of the tier system for the pricing for the water that we get. Like I said, we provide a service to the residents here. So, every residence uses about one to two deliveries per month, which is less than 4,000 gallons per customer. Based on that tier system, they're paying, if the customer or the resident goes and gets it himself, he's only paying for like 95 per thousand. And then if he uses over 8,001 gallons, it jumps up to like five, I think it's like 580, and then from there, it jumps up to like $8 per thousand. So, like I said, as water haulers, we're not benefiting from this water at all. All we're doing is providing a service for the customer. So, I'm asking if there's a way that we could do away with the tier system and go with a flat fee.
I will pass that on to the town manager and staff, and we'll have an answer for you the next council meeting.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll go on to Response to the Public. Response to the Public is an opportunity for the mayor to inform the public about how town officials address matters raised during Call to the Public in our previous meeting. Item A is comments regarding poor audio quality of some town meeting videos. Response. Town staff has double-checked the sound level on Channel 57, the town's website, and on YouTube channel, and the audio is fine. However, sometimes a person's personal computer is not up to date as may be needed. So, we could always recommend that you can listen to one at the library on one of your computers, or watch on Channel 57 if you have Cable One. The second response, questions regarding the benefits of Old Home Manor Business Park project. In January of 2014, the town applied for funding from the Economic Development Administration, EDA, of the U.S. Department of Commerce and the Arizona Commerce Authority, Rural Economic Development Grant to provide water and sewer to 200 acres designated as Old Home Manor for a business park. The purpose of the Rural Economic Development Program is to provide funding to rural communities for economic development purposes. One of the town's strategic goals is industrial and commercial development and the creation of a sustainable economy. The council decided that installing infrastructure improvements that will provide service to Old Home Manor will benefit the community as a whole by providing ready opportunities for the development that will provide employment opportunities for under and underemployed persons in the greater Chino Valley area. Grants and other sources have funded approximately $2 million worth of improvements, but there is additional work needed to be done to prepare the park for occupancy. All right, let's go on to item five, Current Events, Summaries and Reports. This item is for information only. The mayor and council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council, and questions may be answered. No action will be taken. A is Status Reports by Mayor and Council Regarding Current Events. And I'd like to talk about the Halloween party we had out at Memory Park. As usual, it was excellent. Scott, Cindy, and our staff did a heck of a job as usual to get everything set up. We gave out a lot of candy to a lot of people, the big and little kids both. So, and we always have fun dressing up and going out and do that. So, this is the Queen of Hearts over here in the end. She looked absolutely gorgeous. This is Paul Bunyan here with his beard, and I was the scarecrow. So, we had a good time. Thanks, Scott. Pass it on to your staff, will you? Annie, you have something?
I do. I have a couple of things. One, I just want to share an announcement that the Chino Valley Police Department put out earlier today. Chino Valley Unified School District Family Resources has partnered with Bombas to provide socks for the winter. Some of these socks have been given to the police department. Officers will have these socks in their patrol vehicles to provide for those in need. Those go to our students in Chino Valley and in the patrol cars. So, a big shout out for that. Our boys and girls both took second for soccer and state, but they were hard fought. And that's all they have.
Okay, let's go on to Status Report by Town Manager. System Agreement Regarding Town Accomplishments and Current or Upcoming Projects.
Okay, first off, I'd like to recognize employees for longevity. We've got a small handful of employees who have been here over 20 years. So, these are ones who have anniversaries in this month. But particularly, I want to recognize Steve Otis, Scott Bruner, Michelle Codega, and Jamie Lewis, and two of these people are in the room right now. But thank you for your years of service with the town. It's appreciated. I think this is Scott Bruner night, so if I can have Scott come up here, we'd like to make a presentation to the council on a plaque for Memory Park and the library expansion. It's just a little heavy, so. So, this plaque is, it'll be up on the library south-facing wall that faces Memory Park there, next to where the other plaque is for the Old Town Hall.
I think this is really significant with mayor and council because it's extraordinary to take a road block and put a parking lot. It's a win-win situation. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Scott.
You can keep it and put it up. Thank you, Scott. So, to once again recognize something that the Parks and Rec Department has done, they hosted a shred-a-thon last week for our community. It was sponsored with ARP, so we want to thank the ARP volunteers, as well as the Arizona Rangers. They're recognized here in this picture for, you know, helping with the traffic control, et cetera, et cetera. Jamie, if you can go to the next picture. We're going to have another one apparently in May. This was scheduled to be between nine and noon, and by 10:30, they were having to turn cars away because they had gotten so much. So, apparently, people in our community keep a lot of paper that needs to be shredded. So, we have a need out here for this type of service. So, we want to thank the, all the people that did volunteer for that. And then lastly, we have a study session next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., so different than the normal five, because I think we can get this done in two hours. But particularly, the sign code language should be there for next week. So, hopefully, we can kick that out, and you guys will be happy with what's there. And that's it for me, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone? Okay, let's go on to Consent Agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Do you have any way? You want to pull anything? Pull anything?
No, sir.
Okay.
Would you like me to do this?
Yes, sir, would you?
Can't make a motion that we approve Consent Agenda A and B?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mo, post, no, none? All right, motion carries. Let's go on to Action Items. The council may vote to recess the public meeting and hold an executive session on any item on this agenda pursuant to ARS 384310383 for the purpose of discussion or consultation for the legal advice with town attorney. Executive sessions are not open to the public. No action may be taken in executive sessions. We're going to go to Item A, Consideration of Possible Action to Award, to Bid and Approve Construction Services Agreement with Signs Plus in the amount not to exceed $141,148.85 for the municipal building signage project. Ms. Tydeback.
Good evening, mayor and council. So, we have already gone over this quite extensively in the last study session. So, I'm not going to delve too much into the pictures of the signs and all of that. But we did put together the maps that we can look at to where the sign locations would be. So, it's pretty self-explanatory. A would be Town Hall, and then the number one would be where the sign would be located, which is sort of in the middle of the property. With, you know, another road's supposed to be going in, so we wanted to center it. And if you go to the next slide, please. So, the North Campus, again, self-explanatory. You can just see the buildings are marked with B, C, et cetera. And then where the sign locations would be would be numerical. Yep, sure. Old Home Manor, same thing. You can see on the two corners of Jerome Junction and Rodeo, and then Road 4 North in Jerome Junction. And on the next page, the Town Rec Recreation Complex on the corner there, Perkinsville and Road 1 East. So, those are the locations. And I also, I just want to make a couple of comments on the sign package and how it kind of relates to the general plan that was adopted in 2014 and the strategic plan that was created by council and staff members in 2018. I'll be brief. I don't want to bore you too much. So, in the strategic plan, it goes into a key result area two, Sustainable Economic and Community Development. Council has identified community and economic development activities as a priority in order to strengthen its economic foundation and community identity. Note the word "identity." The town needs to formulate broad policies that will improve the structure and implementation of this. Community identity is key for me in that word, because town signage is creating an identity. There's also bullet points on the same page that lists what the town strives to do. And one of them is create a community that is interesting and attractive to residents and visitors alike. So, town signage would landmark community core centers too, which is brought up a lot in the general plan, that we need more community cores. Without identification, we don't know what those community cores are. For example, our sports park or North Campus, Old Home Manor especially, a future community core. So, just wanted to kind of touch base on that. In the postscript in the general plan, it speaks verbatim to, basically, the Chino Valley community has expressed its desire to create a sense of place that identifies the town of Chino Valley with, as a unique and attractive place. And it goes into, you know, the Welcome to Chino Valley sign that was built there at the Road 4 Outer Loop. But it does go into the community's desire to create functional and aesthetic focal points. Signage would be that. That's all? Do you guys want to see the sign pictures again, or?
Maybe for our audience.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, here are the Development Services signs. Those would be sort of the one-off, which is B2 on your map. And then you can kind of correlate it by going through here. But just for the audience, if you want to kind of just go quickly through these ones and show them the more monument signs. And all of the, those can be interchanged in case locations change. And then each building would have their own unique marker, you know, police department, animal control, et cetera. That one's probably one of my favorites. Baseball field, soccer, the pool, the community center, Boys and Girls Club, that does not get a lot of recognition because you can't see a sign there. It's important. I mean, these are the visitors that come to town. They go there. Having something that looks nice like that would create a better, I don't know what the word is. I don't want to say reputation. But image. Yes, thank you. And that would be the business park. And that would be the municipal center. And I also pulled a couple of photos from other towns and cities in Arizona that do products like this, and a lot of them are the up-and-coming and realize the importance of having signs. So, if you just want to open a couple of those, please. They're just examples. We don't have to look at all of them. I just wanted to give you some examples of what other cities and towns are doing. Goodyear has probably had the most successes this year about branding their town. They're really good about it. I think this is a great way to start building our sense of place and our identity as a town. That's all. Thank you.
Questions?
Couple of questions.
Sure.
First, Town Hall, I see that as almost the first slide, because I do get a lot of questions concerning the marking on Town Hall, and I've driven by day and night and looked at it, you know, to see if it's readily obvious. And this potentially can be. I see we went from a month ago or whenever we asked for $38,000 a little bit back to $141,000 to make an improvement. That's quite a jump. Was that just for the research, the $38,000? About three weeks, a month ago?
Oh, you're talking about wayfinding. That's a different project. That's been placed on hold.
Oh, that's a different project, same subject?
Different. It's different, but it's still along the same lines with branding your town and identifying places.
Okay. Yeah, that was just the engineering fee. Okay.
Yeah, and that was a different project.
I'm good.
Cory?
Actually, I'm kind of embarrassed that this is even coming up to council at this point. It was just a matter of months ago that we were trying to get the public to pass a property tax to fix our roads because of the lack of money. And again, it was just a couple of months ago, like Chloe said, that staff came asking for money for other signage. You're stating that this is going to help our economy, something that I asked before. I'd like some financial statistics, and you've not provided any of them to back this request up. Our police department complex is in dire need of replacement. Our roads and streets are deteriorating at an alarming rate. To me, this is no time to spend taxpayers' money, especially $141,000, on a facelift.
No, my concern is that we are a drive-through town. We have no downtown area. Cars come down State Route 89 about 55 miles an hour and a 45, and we try to keep the speed limit down. But we don't have the signs on our facilities for town. We need to start looking like a real town. We need to start identifying our facilities so people that come into the town will know. Most of our towns on the left or the right side of Route 89, very few developments are right along 89. So, people don't really see the real Chino Valley. All they see is the highway. I think this is very important to identify our buildings and help folks find what they need to find here in town, come up in the real world. Any other comments? I'm going to ask for a motion. And we'll have a, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, we'll make a motion to award, bid, and approve construction services agreement with signs plus in the amount not to exceed $141,148.85 for the municipal building signage project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Let's have it. Let's count our votes, please. Let's have it, let's count our votes, please.
Start with Councilmember Kelly.
Negative.
Um, Councilmember Turner?
Yay.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Nay.
Councilmember Best?
Yay.
And Mayor Croft?
Yes. Motion carries.
Four yeses and two noes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on to Item B. Consideration Possible Action to Adopt Ordinance Number Twenty, twenty nineteen, eight seventy-four, declaring the document entitled Town of Chino Valley Video Services Regulatory Ordinance dated November twelfth, twenty nineteen, as a public record and adopting the same, amending the Chino Valley Town Code, Chapter one fourteen, Cable Television, Section one fourteen oh two, license required, and adopting by ref- reference new Chapter one seventeen Video Services relating to the regulation of video services by the town and licensing of the video service providers in town, and adopting Resolution Number twenty nineteen eleven forty-eight establishing a new video license fee as authorized by Chapter one seventeen Video Service. Mr. McGuire?
Yes, sir.
Tell us about this, will you please? Why are we doing this?
Um, a little while ago, and I, I'm always hesitant to say shortly, because things happen over long periods of time. Uh, the state legislature adopted a set of regulations that essentially preempt, uh, video licensing agreements among cities and towns uh, to be anything but what the statute sets out for them to be. And so over the course of a number of months and, and weeks, we've been trying to get slowly implemented provisions that are consistent with the new statute. Uh, essentially what it does is it creates a, a mandatory set of requirements for your license fees with cable providers or video service providers, unless the ones who are currently in place opt to stay under those current agreements and go forward until their natural expiration. So it allows the service provider to be the one to make the decision one way or the other. Um, so that, this is the first step in making sure you have it in place before the end of the year when it has to be. Uh, and then, in the first part of next year, the service providers with current agreements will have to decide whether they want an agreement under the new license regulations or whether they want to remain under the agreement they currently have.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Questions on this side?
Nope.
Do I have a motion? And you can read that long motion.
I got it. No, it's actually on the other page, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number two zero one nine dash eight seven four, declaring the document entitled Town of Chino Valley Video Services Regulatory Ordinance dated November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as a public record and adopting the same, amending the Chino Valley Town Code, Section one one four point zero two, license required, and adopting by reference new Chapter one seventeen Video Services relating to the regulation and licensing of video service providers in the town, and adopt Resolution Number two zero one nine dash one one four eight, establishing a new video license fee as authorized by Chapter one seventeen Video Services.
Now, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're gonna go into executive session. Council may vote to recess the regular meeting and hold an executive session, which will not be open to the public for the following purposes. An executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight, four thirty-one, oh three, eight-four for discussion or consultation with attorneys for the town regarding a potential development agreement for Chino Meadows Subdivision. Are we ready? I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We will go into executives.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Stewart.
Yes. No. Okay.
Okay, are we back on?
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yep.
We have adjourned. From, uh, executive session. We, uh, discussed this item with our attorney, and we've given direction to the town manager and our attorney on some activity.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we say aye?
Aye.
We're out of here.
You walking better?
Little bit. I'm, I'm tight, but yeah, I am getting better.